All right. It's six o'clock.
That was a good one.
I wanted to make sure you're awake. I'll call this meeting to order. All board members are coming. Ask you to please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Hearts are simple.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Maybe I just had some aggression.
A lot of excitement taking.
Sure. All right, is there any additions to the agenda for anyone? Jeff, you good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Anyone else?
Nope.
All right, I will look for a motion to approve the agenda as shown.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
Pete on the motion, Jo Lynn on the second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Scheduled presenters, we don't have any here tonight, so we will move on to the student school board representative and school board committee reports. Is there anything that anyone would like to add to the committee reports?
I had a G C E D meeting. It was the first for me, so it was lots. It's if everybody thinks learning, our budgeting and everything like that and how we run things is challenging, now try learning and absorbing how G C E runs their school and their budgeting and everything like that. It's just, it's a whole new ballgame. So it was just interesting. It's a lot to learn, it's a lot to take in. One of the things, one of the big things that we kind of talked about and kind of took away from that meeting was that all six schools that functioned put into G C E D are working to balance their own budgets and keep their own heads above water kind of thing. But in turn doing that, it is also our job, all six of us, to help keep G C E D functioning and running and keep their head above water as well. So it's just one more thing on all of our schools' plates that just is super important but just one more thing to keep functioning and running financially. So, but yeah, so it was interesting. But then I had community ed. Ski club was a huge hit this winter, so huge thank you to Bonnie and the parents have volunteered to help keep that going this winter. That was a ton of fun. I think they said thirty-seven participants, so it was super cool. Yeah, it was awesome. They did really good. All the kids enjoyed it and everybody survived too. So, no casualties. The preschool registration is out. And the other thing in community ed that we chatted about is facility rental prices continues to kind of be a hot topic that we just kind of want to chat about. Just kind of keeping our head on a swivel, making sure that we are attempting to make a little bit of a profit but also not scare away our customers, if you will. Kind of a happy meeting in that front. And then the ed foundation, also had a meeting. So, the ed foundation, they are currently working on their big auction. They're live and silent auctions, so April twenty-sixth, so mark your calendars. It's super fun, honestly a super fun date night. And all the money obviously goes back to school and the kids, which is amazing. And then we have next week here, March eighteenth, we have Joe Beckman coming back. So two years ago he was here. His topic, his big thing is reclaiming human connection. So, super good speaker. He usually talks to the kids and the staff during the day and then the community is like six to seven in the evening. So, that's always a nice topic, especially in this day and age with all the technology and stuff. And then the other thing too is that last week, the Cannon Falls Ed Foundation, they funded the Orbit Earth program, which came to the elementary school last week. So the kids got to utilize it during the day and it's, they had giant blow-up replicas of the entire solar system in the gym, which was super, super cool. I took the kids to it in the evening. The Earth replica that they had blowing up was like, I mean, it had to be like the size of this room, taller than the ceiling. It was gigantic. I had never seen a bigger bouncy ball in my entire life. So it was super cool though. Kids really got into it and good learning experience and all hands on, but all that stuff is funded from the Cannon Falls Ed Foundation. And it does not work and we don't get to do these things unless we participate and go to their events to help donate money. So, just a super cool thing. So yeah.
Thank you, Jo Lynn.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I had a staff development meeting this afternoon and it was overwhelming and I haven't had a really a chance to go back and re-review everything, so I don't really have much of an update. I think Stephen was there and he might have some more updates on that.
Yeah, there was just a lot of conversations surrounding the two buildings and how they're moving through this year and then planning for next year with our staff development days with the Read Act, elementary teachers going through that. With the, because a lot of times teachers from both buildings will go through training at the same time, whether it's something on culture, accommodations, whatever it is. But this year with the elementary teachers having staff development days filled with the Read Act training, high school teachers are able to get that training, elementary teachers are not. So we're going to try to do the same things that secondary teachers are doing next year in the elementary and then eventually get them back on the same cycle so they can be together for the trainings when staff development days are more together then, again, in the future.
I appreciate that. It was a little overwhelming. Trying to understand all the acronyms too, so.
We had our We Tech meeting. It was our organizational meeting down in Zabota. So, really nothing out of that meeting. It was just strictly organizational and then we have negotiations for the gentleman, I forgot his name.
Aaron.
Yep. To his negotiations for his contract coming up, so I'll be participating in that.
Okay.
Yeah, it was informative just around. We asked during our there. We just asked how Cannon is supported, what do we do, where do we get out of that. They're only canceling one program, which is their, was their TV program.
Yeah.
And Cannon doesn't have any participants in that. Really no impact to us.
And then I'll just add on the facility side. Met last week. There is going to be an action item on facilities, so we'll discuss that a little bit more. But I'll also just add that we're still tweaking with our rates for rentals, just trying to find that happy sweet spot. So, there will be some more adjustments coming to that in the future because we want to make sure that our facilities are full all the time. So, anyone else? All right, then we will move on to administrative board reports. And Abby, we will start out with you.
Okay, sounds good. So, I'm just going to be talking a little about student life. And the first thing is for weightlifting. We were able to host the Weightlifting State Championship here in Cannon Falls. Everything went smoothly. Our team had eight lifters who competed at the state composition, resulting in seven podium appearances with six of those being gold medals. And Nationals is just a few months away in Colorado and many of our members of the team will be participating there. And then Student Council. It was actually yesterday, some of our members traveled down to Cannon River Senior Living and played games with the residents. This is something we do once a month and everyone really just has a good time doing it. And then robotics returned from their trip to Duluth March first. Unfortunately, they didn't have the performance they wanted in the competition, but I've heard many positive things regarding the whole trip. And our winter sports have officially wrapped up. Wrestling concluded on March first when both Adam and Owen Parrish took third in their weight classes at the state tournament. They were the only two wrestlers to advance to the second day. So congratulations to them. It was a long season. And then the boys' basketball team headed down to the Mayo Civic Center to play against Lake City in hopes to advance to the section championships on March eighth. And unfortunately, they did lose seventy-seven to eighty-one, which did conclude their season. And then today, March tenth, all the spring sports began. So this included boys' baseball, girls' softball, track and boys' and girls' golf. And yeah, if you have any questions, just please let me know.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Fact that I weightlifting, a lot of personal records and state records too, as well as told, so, awesome.
Abby, did you attend the career fair?
I did. I think I only went one hour, but yeah, I'm pretty sure it was a success. A lot of kids had positive.
Did you enjoy it?
Yeah, I did. I mean, I like, I think this year it was definitely different for me because I'm a junior, so I was taking it more seriously and definitely trying to talk to more people. But yeah, I liked it.
If there was something we could do different, what would you have liked to have seen?
Um, I know personally for me, I didn't see a lot of colleges that interested me. It was more just, it was typical colleges, I think, a pretty good variety, but I mean, if there were even more, it would be awesome, yeah.
All right, thank you. Elementary school. Stephen, you got anything that you'd like to add?
Just adding, I know I mentioned that earlier, the Thursday night, the Orbit Earth thing. And throughout the day too, it was cool. It was one of the experiences that is, was something different that we haven't really done. Those blow-up planets were really cool. Kids walked into the gym and their eyes got big when they walked in. It was a pretty cool sight. And then just this Friday is the P T O, you know, carnival and sign-on option. So, two good supporters of the school there between that foundation and P T O, up and up the elementary with some of these big events and things, so.
And I'm assuming we're still looking for volunteers?
Yes, yes. If you're able to volunteer, if you know anybody who's around and alive and wants to volunteer. We're always needing more people to help offer to different stations and the prize table and all those things.
Seems like that's always a last minute.
Finally figure them filled, yeah.
People picking up doubles, triples and quadruples.
I would just add one thing to Stephen's report. He did a really nice job hosting the kindergarten open house last week and I appreciated what he went through, but also the teachers being there and doing the scavenger hunt. I think, you know, enrollment being so important to us, it's our first chance these new students and maybe new families and the staff and the teachers did an excellent job of making those people feel welcome. So, I kudos to you guys.
Do we have a great turnout there?
Yeah, I mean, I.
What did we figure out? There was probably around fifty, fifty-four that came? Yep. And preliminary numbers shoot for, I think Andrea had said around lower seventies. Does that sum right Jeff? I know we were talking.
You say the upper sixties, lower seventies.
Yeah, I think it was lower seventies for numbers.
But those numbers will usually change.
Yeah. And, but at fifty-four, from what, I've been heard about from the past as a good number for the registration night, the open house.
Thanks.
Back to that Orbit Earth real quick. I think my favorite thing of the entire night that I heard is I overheard the gym teacher say, if you want to know how far he thought the Earth would go if he kicked it, because it was like a big giant bounce. Well, I was like, I just wonder how far it would bounce if we just tapped it.
All right, moving on. Let's see, Tim and Reed or Stephen or Johnson is not here. But I will just add hats off to our facilities department. They've had some really big events that we've hosted here over the last couple of weeks and they have been working extra and everything seems like it's gone quite flawless from what I've heard. So, hats off to them. We'll move on to super report. Jeff?
I don't really have anything on here other than if you guys have questions, I just have the agenda items that are listed there for this month. I will be out starting Thursday and be back, well, Tuesday. So, we're going to go on vacation for a few days. And if you need to reach me, my phone should work, my mail should work, but I don't know how much I'll be getting to that.
All right, sounds good. Moving on to public input. Before I read this, is there anyone that would like to speak to the board? All right, then we will close public input. Moving on, action items. There's no old business. We'll move on to new business. Consideration to approve the resolution proposing placement on unrequested leave of absence for continuing contract tenure teacher, assistant principal and notice of hearing date. If requested at the close of twenty-four, twenty-five school year due to financial limitations and discontinuance of a position.
Yes, this one was overlooked for last month and it should have been on last month, but we had to put it on this month for the assistant principal position. We have, since we are eliminating that, we have to technically put Stephen on U L A, which is unimpossibly leave of absence. So, we will need to go through this process also.
Any questions for Jeff on that? Not, I'd look for a motion to approve?
I'm moved to approve.
Luke on the motion?
I'll second.
Jody on the second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries.
That is a resolved motion.
Oh, that's right.
Very first page, I assume. All right. Be it resolved by the school board, benefit district number two fifty-two as follows. It is proposed that Stephen Strauss, a continued contract tenure teacher, assistant principal of said district, be placed on unrequested leave of absence without payer privilege benefits at the end of two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year effective June fifth, two thousand twenty-five. Said actions taken in accordance with the district vast agreements and pursuant to Minnesota statute one two two A dot forty subdivision ten upon the grounds described in said statute which are specifically as follows, financial limitations and discontinuance of a position. And I will need a yes or no vote. So, Clinton?
Yes.
Luke?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Rondi?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
And myself as yes.
All right. Number two, consideration to approve the resolution placing a continuing contract tenure teacher on unrequested leave of absence upon acquiescence of such placement. And yes, I Googled that word to make sure I pronounced it correctly. So for any of my former teachers out there that they're thinking that they were impressed with me. Jeff?
This is the final step to place Tom Langfield on unrequested leave as part of the cuts that we had had. And, yes, we need to add this approved.
Yeah, because that's always a two-part.
Yep.
They need to have a certain amount of days to.
To contest it.
Contest it. All right, I will look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Jo Lynn on the motion, Rondi on the second. Clerk?
Whereas the school board of independent district number two fifty-two adopted a resolution proposing placement of Tom Langfield on unrequested leave of absence on February twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five on the grounds of financial limitations and whereas said written notice of the proposed placement on unrequested leave of absence was received by Tom Langfield by personal service on February twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five. And whereas said written notice of the proposed placement on unrequested leave of absence contained a statement setting forth the reasons for the proposed placement as well as a statement that Tom Langfield was entitled to a hearing before the school board provided, they make a request in writing within fourteen days of receipt of that notice and that if no hearing was requested set within said fourteen day period, it constituted a.
Acquiescence.
Acquiescence, thank you, by Tom Langfield to the school. Yeah, I should have, yeah. You're right, to the school board's proposed action. And whereas no written request for a hearing was received by the school board or the superintendent from Tom Langfield as of March tenth, two thousand twenty-five and whereas said failure to make requests for a hearing within fourteen days after receipt of notice was proposed placement on unrequested leave of absence continues acquiescence by Tom Langfield to said placement on unrequested leave of absence. Does that feel good? Do we need a yes or no vote for this one as well?
Yes.
So I'll take yes or no. Clinton?
Yes.
Luke?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Rondi?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
And myself as yes.
All right. Consideration to approve an intermittent F M L A request in accordance with the teacher's master agreement, Article ten, leaves of absence, section eight, medical leave from March third, twenty-five to the end of the year.
This is for Lisa O'Brien and I recommend approval.
If there's no questions for Jeff, I will look for a motion to approve.
Motion.
Go ahead, Pete. Pete with motion?
I'll second.
Luke with the second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Consideration to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six licensed school nurse position as a one point oh F T E.
So, going into COVID, we adjusted the nursing positions to accommodate the needs of the students and staff during that time. And then coming out of COVID, Pam Wolf asked to go to be a point eight. And then we adjusted other R N positions, not the licensed school nurse position, but other R N positions to accommodate for her going to a point eight. And so with her retiring and leaving the district, we need to move the L S N position back to a one point oh and we will adjust the other nursing pieces back to pre-COVID levels, if that makes sense. So, this is just a move to basically move Pam's position back to a full-time position so we can advertise for it.
I have just one question on this. Is there a mandate or a level from the state that we get that says, if you have this many students, you have this many nurses? Or is it based on workload that we believe they have? I just like, with enrollment going up and down, what does it mean for the school? Are we?
Sure. I thought you were going to go in a different direction with that question. A thousand students is the line for requiring a licensed school nurse? And so we're right at that line, right? And then we've had, we've been blessed to have R N nurses to help cover during COVID and so right now we'll go back to having an L P N just covering in the building for that day. What is a good practice? That depends on what people are tolerant of, I guess. There's nothing saying that we have to have so many nurses.
Sure.
But we, it's probably a good practice to have at least somebody in the building that knows that and especially if a nurse is going to be gone for a day for whatever reason, at least we would more than likely have somebody in during that time, for sure.
How many nurses do we currently have?
We have, oh, the point eight for Pam and then we had a point four R N and then a one point oh position L P N.
Do we have.
So we usually have basically one nurse in each building every day.
Okay. Do we have to have at least one R N with that L P N or?
We have to have at least one L S N, which is a licensed school nurse because we're over a thousand students.
Any other questions for Jeff? No, I would look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Jo Lynn on the motion?
I'll second.
Rondi on the second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Consideration to approve moving forward with the roof section and tennis courts projects. Tennis court projects.
So, the facility committee has been talking forever. We have a, I call it a colander over here, section of roof right above Renee Otto's room by the I M C and kind of in that whole section area over there. We've been dealing with that since I've been here and I'm guessing it's probably some years before that. And then we have some safety issues out on the tennis courts. If you've been out on a tennis court, you would see cracks out there about this wide enough for kids to get their feet into if they're running after a ball and cause you trip hazards and break your ankle hazards. And so the tennis courts need to be refinished and that's usually about every five years or so, depending on how they wear over those five years. This section of roof here is, is original the right word, Josh?
Yes.
Nineteen fifty roof?
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two. It's fifty years old. That's what, yeah. So, it's fifty plus years old for this section. It's not currently under the Garland roof name that we have for the rest of our sections of roof for the district. The other section that we looked at is over the main gym and into the C T E hallway area. That's that same age level of roof as well. And a recommendation, after discussing it thoroughly, I guess over the past few years and even this last facility committee meeting, the recommendation was to do the section of roof over this area here as it is actively leaking and then also fix the tennis courts. And the pricing that we got on that, and of course I can't turn this, so I have to use your imagination. But Josh, was this the section that was about six hundred thousand?
So, that's a document from Ailer's pointing out what financing would look like posed for doing that section of roof as well as the tennis court. The two sections of roof in total about one point three million. This section is estimated at six hundred and forty thousand dollars. The other one was seven hundred and fifteen. Because this one is actively leaking, it's a more higher priority. The tennis court estimate for the resurfacing is seventy-two thousand dollars. So that gives you that seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar bond estimate that Ailer's put together. This uses L T F M funds, so long-term facility maintenance dollars that would levy for deferred maintenance type items for the district. They're not dollars that can be used for operations, salaries, wages, classroom types of things. It has to be used for long-term facility items that are, you know, in need of repair. We have some L T F M debt falling off. Currently the district uses about thirty-one percent of its L T F M ability to fund debt on the L T F M project that is in place that will fall off. Doing this recommendation, this section of roof, just the one section and the test court, it'll tie up twenty-four percent of our L T F M dollars. So we have a little bit more flexibility annually for some projects with L T F M. But the big thing is, and I get perception, but these are dollars that can have to be used on these types of items, capital type items, maintenance items, not operating classrooms. So they're really not tied to the same budget because the district was going through looking at.
And there's no tax impact? Because these are taxes that are already taken out every year. We're just bonding forward for the next ten years to get this first section fixed and that.
No tax increase. We're still not, it's.
Yeah, no tax increase.
Correct.
And then also that, you know, the other, the other roof section that is older as well and has leaked or something in the past, no one remembers seeing it leaking at all somewhat recently and it's also not over the gym court when it did. So, I think Brett said he remembered seeing it like quite a few years ago, but.
Yeah, there can be some bleaching along the walls. It's not nearly as bare streets as this one. This section had some roof top units put on during a tennis court project. Some of the curving is a little bit different than the book maybe done originally, which is probably exacerbating that problem a little bit. But it is one of the two sections that needs to be handled. The Garland roof is a pretty good product. It comes with the, it's a forty-year warranty. It's really a thirty plus ten, ten if you do the reconditioning afterwards, but thirty-year warranty on flat roof is a pretty good deal. It is, I think when we look at it, the L T F M, the product and doing something like this is generally because the state realizes that the district only have six hundred thousand million dollars or sorts of things to do those products on an annual basis. And this is the way for us to get this project done. The facility committee also views that other section of roof rather than tying up, you know, fifty percent of our L T F M dollars for the next ten years really kind of being hamstrung with what we can do around the buildings and at time. That that one can be maintained and possibly, you know, patched if needed at times at much lower costs and with our current L T F M dollars, rather than doing the six-figure replacement on it until two thousand thirty-two when we have some more flexibility when some bigger debts fall off and we can potentially do different projects without there being a tax increase or possibly even a tax decrease and getting something out of it. Try and do the best of both, be responsible stewards of the district's facilities, taxpayers' dollars and getting through a window of time where we need to just kind of push out to survive till two thousand thirty-two.
I will say too on the tennis court portion that we, especially for the new board members, we kind of share that space with the city. So, I do think we do have somewhat of a liability to the community members that we maintain it, take care of it. But they also, the city also helps with some of that. Uh, but they also, the city also helps with some of that, but um I do think we, we need to make sure it's in good shape for, when random city or public people come and use it.
And that's a good point that I should bring up for the new board members is that we have an agreement with the city for them, we have an agreement between us and. The city for John Birch and we have an agreement between the city and us for the use of the tennis courts and they. Uh, in that agreement, they will maintain twenty-five percent of those courts and so whenever we have expenses, then we will build them back twenty-five percent. Uh, of that as well.
And for anyone that's wondering, pickleball will be added out there too.
Pickleball lines will be added.
Yes.
With the roof, is there any chance that if we get into the roof, if it's, especially if it's been leaking for some time, is there gonna be, is there more damage than maybe what we have seen? By chance? Is like, you know what I mean, like?
More than what they quoted?
Correct, correct.
Because they can't see until they get in?
Correct. If it's been leaking for some time, just, just curious, is there a potential?
Part of the debt on that, they'll rip the whole thing off and replace the insulation as well.
Oh, okay.
That's any bid.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, once you open someone up, there's a lot of responsibility of other things, but at least the insulation probably. Uh, included which would mean remove the old stuff, so I don't, if there's a leak, there's probably some wet stuff. It's a matter of what.
The insulation is probably the biggest piece of it, I would say. Once you get inside, then you can remediate and it's usually a lot smaller inside.
Any other questions? Again, this is a recommendation from the facilities committee. Uh, I will look for a motion to approve as shown.
I'll move to approve as shown.
I'll second.
Luke on the motion. Jody on the second. Any other further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Consideration to cancel the fiscal year twenty-six bus purchase previously approved on October twenty-eighth, twenty-four.
As we're going through the budgeting process for FY twenty-six. Um, and we've obviously already made cuts, um. We're finding out some little additional items that weren't accounted for when we made the projection. One. The compensatory formula was not put in the what-if scenario for MBE. Is that the proper way to say that, Josh?
Yeah, well, they don't really have the what-if you have for fiscal twenty-six, but this wasn't discussed at that point where.
Right. So the governor came out. Uh, less than a month ago and it sounds like. Unless his plan passes. Which would be more of a hold harmless for districts. Uh, we're going to be another hundred thousand dollars short due to the current. Compensatory formula, which is based on pre-reduced applications. That was not accounted for in the original. Budget that we brought to you for cuts. Uh, item number two is. We're in the process of working with GCV and their cuts, which means that all of our districts. Are going to have to probably shoulder some of that responsibility also and our best estimate right now is about fifty thousand dollars for that. Part of the. Uh, piece and we'll discuss more in closed session tonight is as part of the litigation. And this will make much more sense once we get into closed session. Uh, there could be some ongoing costs to the district moving forward until at least twenty forty. Starting this coming year, actually starting on April first, so we'll have to eat part of it out of this year. Is an additional fifty thousand dollars. Uh, for utility costs.
That's just for next year.
That's just for next year.
Per year.
And that'll, well, that's going to start escalating.
Okay.
Up. Uh, by about ten thousand dollars a year, because by like twenty forty, that estimate is supposed to be a hundred and forty thousand dollars. And we'll talk more about that in the closed session. So, uh, the best estimate that we have right now is about two hundred thousand dollars more. And my suggestion is a one-time cost savings, so it's not year over year. And my hope is that we would have uh some resolve to that compensatory. Discussion because we won't know the compensatory answer until late May. And more than likely realistically June, because they're not going to finish the session on time.
Yeah.
They'll go into June and possibly even July. And so my suggestion is that we don't purchase a bus. Like we planned on and we're working with the company right now. There might be a. A, a cancellation fee, which I, I'm arguing with them that we haven't received our bus yet that we ordered last year, so. We'll talk about the cancellation fee nicely.
And also we're reducing one uh bus route too, so.
Right.
Could help with that as well.
Yeah. So I'm asking the board to unpurchase a bus that they approved on October twenty-eighth. And the rough cost of that bus is about a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. So it'll eat into that two hundred thousand dollar estimate that we have. Are there any estimates on what a cancellation fee may be? Is it percentage or? I, I have no idea. Uh, Andy Sandstrom is working with him on that.
I would think that we kind of have the leverage on it.
Don't even have buses.
Well, this is year number three in a row that they're way behind or four.
Yeah, I'm guessing this bus isn't even on the production.
Any other questions? If not, I will look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Jo Lynn? Pete? On the second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
We're gonna hold off on, he's gotta read a statement here.
I'll read a statement again first. The next item on the agenda is a review of pending litigation. In order to consider this litigation, the school board must meet with its attorney in a confid- confidential setting to. Obtain advice regarding pending litigation. It would be determined to the interest of the district to hold a public discussion. Sorry, it would be detrimental to the interest of the district to hold a public discussion with its attorney regarding its legal positions and strategy. The matter to be discussed is joining litigation to challenge a, a change to the bill credit rate to the school dis- that the school district receives. Through its solar garden agreements. The specific subjects to be discussed pursuant to Minnesota statute thirteen D dot zero one subdivision three. Are the district's legal positions, defenses, and strategies with respect to the pending litigation, including potential settlement or resolution of such claims. Pursuant to Minnesota statutes, section thirteen D dot zero five. Subdivision three B and the attorney-client privilege. I will entertain a motion that the meeting will now be closed for, for the purposes stated. And before I say that, I will say that there will potentially be an action item. Uh, after our closed session, so if anyone did want to stick around when we do open it, you surely are more than welcome to. Uh, we are not quite positive right now on how long this closed session will last. I would assume twenty to thirty minutes roughly.
Yeah.
So right now I would look for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
To move into a closed session.
I'll make a motion.
Jody?
I'll second.
Rondi on the second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.